I can.
We actually pulled this particular item out because since Mr. Robinson was going to be here this evening to talk about the recent state budget actions, he was going to do a combined presentation and I believe they're going to address the schematics. We pulled it out under item number five, but we can certainly move it forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'll do whatever you want. If he wants to talk about it, then we can go on through this agenda. And I just didn't know it was in the consent agenda, that's why.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know it was. I saw that too, but I didn't know if by doing the consent agenda, we would have basically done that.
Why don't we just hold up that item until we get to item five? Is that so?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it all right with everybody?
It's all right with me, Mr. Chairman, but in view of the fact that they may have a long distance to travel.
They do.
Can we move them up a little further on the agenda?
Whatever the pleasure the board is, we will do.
Mr. Adams, we could take care of it now.
I'm at the chair, Mr. Pleasure. Whatever the chair, we want to do it now, that's fine.
Is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
All right, let's move item five up and ask Rob and his staff member to come forward. And we've got some, just so everybody will know, that we have consideration of the Alliance Behavioral Healthcare Lease Terms and discussion of the impact of recent state budget actions. Maybe you can answer some of Mr. Adams's questions about the other item.
I hope so. Good evening, Mr. Chair, County Commissioners. I'm Rob Robinson, I'm the CEO with Alliance Behavioral Healthcare. I have Kelly Goodfellow with me, she is our CFO. And we are pleased to be here before you to request funding to support a portion of the cost to renovate 711 Executive Place. This, of course, is Alliance's satellite office and the former facility for the LME. We are grateful also for the opportunity to possibly reach a long-term agreement, lease agreement. As you may know, our folks are working with Ms. Cannon and other county folks on a long-term agreement. We think this makes a lot of sense for us to stay here. This is a facility that the community is familiar with. The staff there are anxious to stay there. From a financial standpoint, we're thankful for the rate that we do have. And then lastly, I think this is another opportunity for the county and Alliance to work together. We are certainly grateful for your commitment to individuals with mental health, substance abuse, and intellectual development disabilities, you have certainly shown that. So, we appreciate that. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Ms. Goodfellow. No, I do need to apologize, I'm not fully prepared to talk about Medicaid transformation. I know that we've talked about it and I own that. I can talk a little bit about House Bill 372, if you'd like, at the end, but not fully prepared for presentation, okay? But I'm going to turn over to Kelly right now to talk about the lease.
Thank you, we have just a brief presentation, hopefully I can answer some of the questions that you have. We do have a design of the space. First, again, we've been in this space since we merged with Cumberland LME in July of 2013. We currently occupy the first and second floor. We also share meeting and storage space on the fourth and the fifth floor. Cumberland Mental Health occupied that space for about the last 10 years or greater. So as Mr. Robinson said, the location is very familiar to the community, to the county, and to the stakeholders. Some of the challenges we have, which is why we started to go down the road and started redesigning, is the space, number one, is currently unsecured, which is not in line with our National Accreditation Agency. People can come in the building, nothing is locked, and that is really not how we're able to do business in all our other locations. The current layout results in insufficient spaces, actually square footage is much more than we really need, and the layout doesn't comply with the Alliance facility and staff guidelines that we've established for our other sites. Thirdly, a provider that we contract with is a tenant in that building, again, going to the unsecured information that we have, which is a great concern for us. Our renovation plans are to redesign the first and second floor. We want a secure entrance to Alliance space with open corridors to the public. We want ample storage space on the floors that we locate and just our staff. We, of course, want room for growth, we are constantly adding more staff and there's more challenges provided to us by the state. We also want the Alliance look and feel for the community, for our providers, and for our staff, that's very important. It will, number one, give our staff a feeling of that they're actually connected to Alliance, even though we're in Durham. And we are also interested in a long-term lease. We enjoy this space, we want to stay there, and we've talked to the county about having that long-term lease. So I know this is probably not the best depiction, but I'll kind of give you an idea. This is the proposed first-floor design. You will basically walk in, and again, the corridor to the elevator, it will all be secure, there'll be an entrance that people can walk in and check in with the receptionist there, and they will not be able to get into any locations with Alliance staff without a badge entry or being escorted by staff. The public will obviously be get to the restrooms and the staircase and the elevator. Right now, there's this plans to hold our administrative staff, as well as our intellectual development and disability care coordinators that are out in the community, and they're the ones who most frequently meet with consumers in the community. So we have some space designed that they can have private meetings with consumers as they come in. I think the only thing that may change is if we have to move the server room, some IT requirements that may change that a little bit. On the second floor, this will help hold our mental health and substance abuse care coordinators, as well as our provider network and community relations staff. We have a big file area and a big storage area. We have a lot of files that we inherited from the Cumberland LME days, we had to by law. Community Relations has a lot of storage needs because they're out in the community, they have brochures and activities that they do, and so they have a requirement to house some things. We have some extra workstations, again, to address growth, so we think there's some great potential. As well as, I'm going to go back to that first floor for a second. If you see in the upper right-hand corner, we've extended this space for allow for a large conference room. Right now, if we were to have a provider meeting, it gets really hard. We have a small conference room, people, it's first come, first served. If you're late, you don't get to come in, and you sort of just have to catch on the fly. So by having a very large conference room, we can do some great provider meetings, and we can even do webinars with all the sites together. So very excited about that. Before I go on to, any questions about the design?
Mr. Keith.
Yes, ma'am. All right, yes, Kelly, Rob, thank you for coming. You know, this is about partnerships, and it's hard to believe that three years is coming since we've been in this partnership, and by all accounts, I think it works pretty well. We had discussed at the meeting the investment, if you will, from Cumberland County to, and I just want to talk about a little bit of the rent and how that we get acknowledged on that, because the Alliance is basically funded by the counties that it supports, correct?
We are actually predominantly funded by Medicaid.
But, but we also invest into...
Oh, completely, yes, yes.
So, by giving, by giving or waiving rent, excuse me, there is a value to that, and we had talked about credit to our account.
Yes.
For that amount that we agreed to, and just wanted to bring that out. I'm going to talk about the FFE, okay? The furniture fixtures and equipment. We got a memo today saying that would basically be the property of the Alliance. And although I think we're all are okay with investing into our buildings and investing for the Alliance, I believe you said that was somewhere around $80,000, that you believed the FFE would be coming in?
The furniture is more about $350,000.
Oh, good, okay. Since that is going to be retained by the Alliance and not left over, would it be possible that you guys could look at credit for us on that also?
I think we could, yes.
Rob?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. So we'd be talking about those two things to kind of go into our account, and that way, if something were to happen, and I hope it doesn't, because you got, I think it's a good partnership going, that those would also carry over?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Rob, thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other questions for Kelly?
And again, just to clarify the funding, we are requesting just $500,000, no more, and hopefully we can get the cost, we'll continue to try to get the cost below 1.2 million, and anything above $500,000, we picked up by Alliance, and again, that's predominantly Medicaid administrative dollars.
And I guess, my question, how did we get to the 1.2? I mean, I guess you did, some kind, somebody came in.
We did.
And did, I mean, I don't get any of that in terms of, and I know that you all are a different entity than government, but did somebody come in and at least price it and tell us?
Yes.
Because I see what you showed me, which didn't really mean a lot to me, because I didn't know what it looked like beforehand, so, you know.
We can give you two if you'd like.
Can get me, but, so we had somebody come in and do that?
We did, we actually worked with a company that I believe has worked in the county here before, they've done some work with the county, and we had them, they did a walkthrough with Mr. Jackson and Mr. Brown, looked and see, you know, what walls exist that can be torn down, what does it take to be able to fit within that space, and so they did quite extensive review for us. And they've done other projects. We worked with them in Durham, and they've done multiple sites for us.
And the last question, I guess, is for the county attorney, because I think at the facilities committee, and I see we did it at Mid-Carolina, we talked about a termination clause, and I didn't see one in this lease.
I didn't like the lease, but my understanding is in there. Is there a six plus number?
There is not one in, I mean, and I would think that, I would ask that, any lease that I'm about to look at, I would hope that my attorney would at least review, who drafted it, I guess?
Ms. Jones' office did this. Ms. Jones' office.
Okay, so your office did do this, okay.
Yes, she should have.
Okay. All right. I just, the way you led it, it was like nobody from that office looked at it.
No, I admit that I didn't, I couldn't answer your question directly, but I can look.
It's not in there.
Upon a review, I don't believe.
There is not one in there.
I don't believe it's in this lease. It is in the Mid-Carolina lease, but I don't believe it's in this lease.
It is not in this lease.
Okay, and I think, I know that I may have had some discussion with Tracy about that too, it's, I don't, the curiarity of this with Alliance sinking this much money into the renovation and stuff, I don't think this is the kind of lease that we could reasonably, you know, expect it to be, just a termination clause, and I think that's probably what the situation is. We're doing, they're doing, we're doing...
I don't say what they're doing, but I mean, and I understand that, but that's, I mean, we came out of facilities, and that's what we were talking about out of facilities, if that was going to be whatever the thing was going to be, I think we at least needed that to say that's why it's not in there.
Okay.
Or whatever, I don't know why it's not in there, but...
My advice would be that this would not be the, or recommendation would be, this would not, because of the expenditure and the peculiarities of this, I mean, we asked him to come back and stay and reconsider this and everything, that the term, you know, they've talked about this more in terms of a longer-term lease, and it's because of the specialized work they're doing in it, so...
Do we even address it with them? Or we just decided not to put it in there? I just, that's all I need to know.
No one in my office negotiated the lease, I know that. Mr. Jackson, I think, can answer that. Was that, was it discussed? Mr. Jackson?
It was discussed for Mid-Carolina, but not for this.
Okay.
And I would have to agree with what the county attorney says, as far as his position on it.
Okay, Mr. Keith?
Real quick, regardless of, it should be addressed, that it's not, that there's not going to be one in there, in the lease, whether it's just not acknowledged at all. I'm no attorney, but at least if we say that there's a long-term lease, that there should be an out clause in the second or third, you know, additional time period or something. It should, it should have been addressed, at least. That's all I had to say, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This may not be relevant to it, but at the same time, I think that one of the considerations here is that we don't really know how long we're going to exist.
That's the biggest issue.
And I think...
Which hat are you wearing there?
I'm wearing both of them, because it will affect both of us, because, you know, we've been told that there's going to be four MCOs in this state. We've been told who we will be merging with. We haven't been told when. So we know it's not going to be this year, but we do know that it could come as early as next year. We're hoping not, but what we're doing is it's working fairly successful for everybody now. And then for those that perhaps don't remember, I'm sure some of us remember, that the amount of money that we were putting into mental health each year before we had the managed care organization. And that was in the neighborhood of about $4 million. So I feel like that we're getting somewhat of a bargain here. And then the other thing, and this is again, just for informational purposes, because you know I do wear both hats. The other facilities, correct me if I'm wrong, but the other facilities, Durham and Raleigh, both have the similar setup.
They do, they do.
And it seems to work for them. And if you go to the Durham facility, I know that's where we have most of our meetings, it's very secure, you can't even get in some rooms there without a badge, so. I just pass that on for information purposes for you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I mean, that is a good point, I certainly don't mind going back or getting involved in this to the extent of making sure that we have a provision in the event the authority, as it's now constituted, is reconstituted, or we no longer are a member of it, that we would have an out provision. I think that would be reasonable, and we can certainly take that up with Alliance.
Okay.
Having said all that, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Lancaster?
To make a motion that we approve the Alliance Behavioral Healthcare Lease Terms and Building Renovation.
Did we add that statement to it?
Are y'all opposed to an out clause?
Well, no, we would request an out clause too. And I wouldn't, after the chairman, I would just not even have an out clause now. I mean, hey, look, it doesn't behoove us to have an out clause now, after I got the information that I just got. I'd just take the five-year lease, the long-term lease, and just do it.
I think our attorney would prefer that we had an out clause.
That would be the best for the county.
I'm not letting them talk anymore. It makes me...
Is there a second to that motion? Anybody second?
Me, I did.
Ms. Counsel? Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, if it would please that we could talk about the credit terms of the lease of the FFE and the in lieu of rent items, is that reasonable?
Yes, and my understanding is there will be, and my recommendation would be to be a separate agreement to address that, because it's really not related to the lease terms and stuff.
Okay.
And I understand that that has been discussed with Alliance, and they are amenable to...
I withdraw my request.
Thank you so much for your support, we appreciate it.
Okay. Well, we have to vote.
And again, and I thank Ms. Counsel for reminding me that y'all have a long trip back to Durham tonight, but thank you for what you do.
Drive safely.
Yeah, thanks, thanks.
Yeah, and I'll call a question, all those in favor of the motion?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Now, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Kelly, thank you, Rob.
Mr. Chair, would you still like a present, update on Medicaid reform?
Okay.
Okay, I'll make it as brief as possible. So the long session, as you know, was real busy, and we were impacted. There was two big topics for us, one was Medicaid reform, the other was funding cuts. Medicaid reform, the big piece, was how to get cost containment and improve outcomes on the physical health side, right? The behavioral health side, they had LME, MCOs, which is us. There was two theories behind that. One was bring in commercial managed care companies, and then the other side was to have provider-led entities, which is essentially the provider world, to operate under a capitated system. At the end of the day, they got both. They've got on the commercial managed care, they would like to bring in three commercial managed care companies, also would like to set up six regions to include six PLEs or provider-led entities. And when I say provider-led entities, that's primarily hospitals, and then certainly specialty groups and outpatient providers. On the behavioral health side, for us, we were left alone for four years after they approved CMS, the federal government approves the request to bring in the commercial managed care, which is going to be through a waiver. And I know I'm throwing a lot of information at you, but essentially, we're left alone for four years after the approval, which really gives us about five to seven years that we're okay. And during that time, we need to figure out how to operate in this new system and work more closely on it with the physical health partners. So that's the Medicaid transformation. I think that's pretty significant for us. We're working hard, trying to set up meetings and establish partnerships on the physical health side. I don't think we needed legislation to tell us that integrated care was the right thing to do. We've been doing that for years, and in several communities, we have several projects here. We work very closely with the local CCNC here. We also work with a couple of primary care providers here, trying to make sure that we could deliver whole-person care to the community. And so there'll be a lot more activity in that area that we will be talking about in the future. The other piece of that, and probably the most concerning piece of that, is the funding cuts. We received, as LME MCOs, $112 million cut this year and $152 million next year on, for state services. And that for us equates to about $11 million this year and $17 million for next year. That's a pretty significant cut, I will tell you, for us. We have, they expect us to take that from our fund balance and then to supplant that for the state side of things. It is concerning, because we had an expansion plan, we, a spending plan that used our savings to expand services in all four of our communities. We had several projects here in Cumberland. We can still do some of it, but we can't do all of it. And so we're making adjustments right now, and at some point, I'd like to present to you where we do plan to expand services in Cumberland. That's what we were set up to do, was to save money and reinvest back in the services. And for us, we had a three-year plan. First year was to get up and operational, get our network, get our providers enrolled in our system. Second year was to evaluate what the needs and gaps were, and our third year, which is where in now, was to expand the services. And so, though we can cover it this year, we'll be working hard to see if we can get that $152 million for next year reduced, so that we can continue to deliver more services. After the third year, though, if the cuts continue, then we'll be having to make adjustments to the continuum, meaning we'll have to reduce services, which, right now, we're good, but if these continue, then we'll have to make changes. So that's an update, I'll be happy to answer any questions, anything you want to add?
No, I just wanted to, again, about the cut for this year, the cut is based on the state funds. We are an entity, entity that is, its history is from single-county LMEs that did not get an opportunity to build up a state fund balance for years like other LME MCOs did, and so we are forced to cover that cut from our Medicaid savings, unlike other MCOs. So why, that's why it's particularly different for us, and I just wanted to sort of make that point, so.
And I think it's important that you tell the board too, that you can't transfer funds from state funds to federal funds and vice versa.
Yes, we, again, they make the point to, that you cannot use Medicaid dollars to cover the state services, you can use your fund balance. So if we were unable to have a fund balance, we would have to make reductions in the state services, because we wouldn't have money to be able to cover it. So that's why they, the legislators took it from the state side, because they couldn't touch the Medicaid side, so.
So as the state hadn't expanded our Medicaid provision out of the state, that tends to hurt us and hurt you all in terms of some of the services?
If we had expanded Medicaid, if we had...
It would help?
Yes, it certainly would.
And so by them not doing that, that has given us a tremendous disadvantage in terms of some of the services that we'd be able to provide to our citizens, is that correct?
The couple of services and expansion, correct me if I'm wrong, are, would be a greater population, and we'd reduce the pressure on the state funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I believe that concludes your presentation now, and we'll go back to 4E1, since we're waiting on that. I guess there's no action to be taken on that at this time, is that correct? Rick?
I believe you already taken the action that was...
We took, we voted on it.
We included the lease terms on this, okay, all right. Okay, Ms. Cannon, we'll go right on with the next item, which is the public hearings.
Okay, the public hearings this evening are uncontested rezoning cases, case P-15-52.
Yes, both of these cases are similar in nature in that the property owners in both situations are asking for a small piece of their property to be rezoned to what the original other portion is. So in this particular case, they're asking for CP and R6A to, or to CP. In other words, most of the property is already CP, and they're asking for the R6A portion to be rezoned to CP. There was no opposition at the planning board meeting, and planning will recommend unanimously to approve.
Which one are we, are we on?
4A.
4A, okay.
P-15.
I got you, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Lloyd before we move into public hearing? I'll open the public hearing, any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the request for rezoning consistent with 2030 (I don't think I got it right) growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff, included in the agenda package and is reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
I move to approve the request for CP planned commercial district as recommended by the planning staff, included in the agenda package and is reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
The next item is case P-15-53.
Yes, another case where the applicant is requesting a portion of their property be brought under the same zoning as the rest of the property, in this case, A12RR, and planning will recommend unanimously, and there was no opposition.
Okay, fair clause.
I'm sorry, I was here.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lloyd?
I don't have any questions, I think Mr. Lloyd addressed, there were some citizens here, and I think he addressed their concerns, it was just a small piece, the majority of the property was already zoned, and this was just a small piece of the last A1 that was going to be zoned to be consistent with the rest of it.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? And I think they were here, and I think we just wanted to make sure, and we talked to them a little bit earlier, so even though it was uncontested, they didn't sign up, but I think their concerns were addressed early before this meeting, Mr. Chair.
They were concerned about manufactured home parks, and that they're not allowed in this, either one of these districts.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
Open the public hearing, any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move that we found the request for rezoning consistent with 2030 growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan, reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff, included in the agenda package, reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second, second by Ms. Counsel, any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the request of the RR Rural Resort, this residential district as recommended by the planning staff, included in the agenda package and reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. The next item under public hearings are our minimum housing code enforcement cases. The first case is MH-1089-2015.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
You got the name.
Okay, our first case here is MH-1089-2015. Property owner is Fort Mavis James McGilberry, excuse me. This property is located at 204 Forte Road, Stedman. It is a dilapidated structure that's unsecure. There's a large hole in the roof in the rear of the structure. There is an accessory building on the, on the property as well. And we're seeking an order for demolition.
Okay, any speakers?
There are no speakers.
I'll open and close the public hearing, wishes of the board.
I move that we adopt the order and report to the minimum housing inspectors the true facts in this case, and order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days, and to order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cause of such action, and direct the clerk to incorporate foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman, and record the same in the register of deeds.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.